To the flag of the United States of America and to great politic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine of justice for all. To the flag of the state of New Mexico, let's see a symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Our dear Father, we are grateful this day to be able to come together. We ask that you will give the commissioners discernment to make the correct decisions for all the citizens of Eddie County. Father, we are grateful for the abundance of natural resources that we have in our county. We're grateful for all the leaders that we have throughout our county, cities. Father, we ask that we might have those same great leaders in our country and have the abundance in our country that we have here in Eddie County. We ask that you will watch over our law enforcement, detention officers, fire. These things we pray about in Jesus' name, amen.
Good morning, everyone. So go ahead and get the meeting started with public comments and announcements.
Good morning, commissioners. Norbert Rampart, City of Eddie County. Our Declaration of Independence lists fundamental human rights, among them the right to life as the first and most prominent. It then defines the securing of those rights as the principal responsibility of government. All levels of government share this responsibility, but most have failed at this task, specifically at protecting babies in the womb. Even worse, our current federal and state administrations encourage, fund, and thus force us to participate in the slaughter of our preborn children and grandchildren. Consequently, consequently, our city and county leaders must step in and resist. Cowspats and Eddie County's eastern neighbors have already done so. Roosevelt and Lee Counties, Clovis, Parks and Ullis, passed ordinances that makes the killing of preborn children virtually impossible within their jurisdictions. They blocked a potential avalanche of murder incorporated enterprises from taking root in our community. Cowspats and Eddie County have for the most part avoided hosting child killers in the past, but now they face or very soon will a stark choice between life and death. Will you, our elected representatives, join our life-affirming and child-protecting neighbors to the east? Or will you accommodate the premeditated homicide of the weakest among us in our homes and in our community? The choice is yours.
Is there any other public comments or announcements? Seeing none, we do have a few service awards this morning that we're going to be handing out. Chairman Bowen, if you want to come up here to present some of them. Our first one we have is our Barrio County Commissioner Bernie Carlson, five years. Next, we have our probate judge Jake Francis, five years. He's unable to beat him, but... Next, we have Richard Burks from our Fire and Rescue Division Chief of Training, five years. And finally, we have Ashley Knight from our Treasure Accounting Tech One, five years.
She can't be here today, but I can take that.
So if we could just get a quick picture? Out here in the... Do you want to hold it there? All right, before we head into item three, I do have a couple amendments to the agenda. We will be pulling item number 11, New Mexico Gas Company ordinance, and we will also be pulling number item 14, Happy Valley Cooperative Water Works. Those items, those ordinances, we'll go ahead and pull and we won't be discussing. So go ahead and move into item three, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-127, Ordinance granting non-exclusive franchise to Artesia Rural Water Cooperative, a New Mexico nonprofit corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
With that, a motion to open the public hearing. Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova? Carlson?
Yeah.
Beard?
Yes.
Mr. Cross.
Here we go. Commissioners, this is just a renewal, renewal, so to speak, of the franchise agreement for Artesia Rural Water Co. These are subsequent items as well, are renewals of these ordinances and franchise agreements. They've got to be done every 10 years. They obtain the use of our utilities in our county right of ways. Sets forth the direction that they have to take in order to use our right of ways, put their utilities in there, whether it's boring, whether it's trenching, some poles in the right of way, sets forth their use of our right of ways. And I've, I've sent this out to all the entities, any entity that has had any question with Artesia Rural. They, they had a few questions. I spoke with their manager. We discussed items. He never returned any more further questions, so as far as I'm aware, we're...
Is there any public comment on this ordinance?
We can't hear back there.
Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll move into county attorney comments.
As Steve indicated, these are renewals. The only significant changes from prior franchises we've had is we run into snags at times when we need to have the use of our right of ways back and, and ask an entity to move or relocate some lines based on what's going on, road expansions, those kind of things. And that's giving them a lot of notice and letting them to take some additional time. We run into snags where we've asked some of the bigger companies to move things and they just kind of bang their nose at us. And so we, we put that in all these ordinances. We've never had a trouble with any of these water co-laws, anybody like that. We can't move SPSs, utilities. We can't move a natural gas pipeline, those kind of things. So that's, those terms are still in there, but those really are who those are applicable to because we hadn't had a problem in the past.
Questions or comments?
I have a couple questions. Do we require any type of bond?
No, they do have to provide insurance when they're in our right of way. They have to go through the Public Works Department to get, gain permission and, and notice to the public when they're going to be in there if that's what the Public Works Department requires, not a bond per se. They do hire typically constructors or one of those other companies to do anything. Who does put up, and they go down and they get a permit and again, insurance.
Okay. So you don't feel as the attorney for the county that you need to require a...
No, I, I think as long as...
Safe bond or anything?
As long as we keep that insurance in place and us naming additional insured, I'm pretty comfortable with that.
What about any, have we had any complaints?
Yes.
On, on these people, on the entity that's trying to get the...
No, I won't.
Not this one specifically?
No complaints. Okay. That's the only thing that I like about it, um, moving from having complaints. Correct. I, I have not needed the entities with any, that my entity, and I can play it to my own reason. Thank you.
With that, I'll look for a motion to approve or disapprove ordinance 24-127.
We approve.
You have a motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
With that, I'll look for another motion to bring us out of public hearing for ordinance 24-127.
Overruled.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry? Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yeah.
Beard?
Yes.
We'll move into item number four, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-128, Ordinance granting non-exclusive franchise to Caprock Water Company, a New Mexico corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico. Just made a motion to open the public hearing.
Don't move.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Commissioners, about the same, same comments on this one. We, we've been in contact with Caprock Water. They're agreeable to this ordinance and are willing to move forward with it as soon as we've asked it. We've had no issues with them, uh, no comments from the public on it or any other...
Do we have any public comment from Caprock Water, anybody concerning ordinance 24-128? County attorney comments?
No additional comments.
Anybody on the board? With that, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 24-128.
Several.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Look for a motion to come out of public hearing, ordinance 24-128.
I'll make the motion in a second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Moving to item five, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-129, Ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Central Valley Electric Cooperative, a New Mexico corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
I'll look for another motion to open public hearing for ordinance 24-129.
Don't move. Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Commissioners, we, I've been in contact with Central Valley Electric, mostly via email. There's been no opposition, no questions from them on this as well.
Have any public comment for 24-129 or anybody from Central Valley Electric going? Mr. Taber?
No additional comment.
Commissioners?
None.
With that, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 24-129.
Several.
Second.
Motion in two seconds, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova? Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Now I'll look for a motion to come out of closed hearing or come out of public hearing. Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Moving on to item six, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-130, Ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Cottonwood Rural Water Association, a New Mexico nonprofit corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
Look for a motion to open public hearing to consider ordinance 24-130.
I'll make the motion in a second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And Beard?
Yes.
Steve?
Commissioner, I've spoken with their manager on a couple of occasions. He had a couple of questions. I clarified his questions. Beyond that, they've been agreeable to this as well. They've not received any other public comment in regards to it. I'm sorry if I'm not speaking up enough.
Remind me. Do you have any public comment on ordinance 24-130? Cottonwood Rural, or association with them? Mr. Taber, you got it? Commissioners?
We're counting.
With that, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 24-130.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
I'll look for another motion to come out of public hearing on ordinance 24-130.
Several.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Moving on to item seven, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-131, Ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Dell Telephone Cooperative, a New Mexico corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
For motion to open public hearing, consider 24-131.
I'll make the motion in a second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Commissioners, I haven't actually had a lot of conversation with Dell Telephone. They asked for a copy of it. I sent it to them. We never received any further feedback from them on that. So I, I would assume they were agreeable to it. Been a month and a half or better since we, we sent it out to them.
Any public comment regarding Dell Telephone or ordinance 24-131? Yes, none? Commissioners?
I have one question. I don't know how active they are. Well, here's my question. They have to sign an agreement right away, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you keep saying that you've talked to them and stuff, but they have signed that agreement, right?
No, they'll, they'll sign it. Accept it within thirty days. Once we approve it, they will accept it. At a timeframe to accept it. If they don't accept it, they don't get one.
Okay.
All right, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 24-131.
Second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Now can I get a motion to come out of public hearing for ordinance 24-131?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Here.
Beard?
Yes.
Item eight, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-132, Ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to El Paso Natural Gas Company, a New Mexico corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
That will open public hearing to consider ordinance 24-132.
Several.
Second.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova? Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Commissioners, we sent this to El Paso Natural Gas Company. We spoke with them briefly on a couple of occasions. I've never received any additional feedback from them. Like, like all these others, it's, it's a renewal. It's, there's really nothing changed in the ordinance from the one they did ten years ago.
Do you have any public comment on ordinance 24-132 or El Paso Natural Gas Company? Mr. Taber?
No comment.
Commissioners? With that, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 24-132.
Don't move.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova? Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to come out of public hearing on ordinance 24-132?
All right, the motion.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova? Carlson?
Yes.
Yes.
Item nine, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-133, Ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Malaga Mutual Domestic Water Consumers and Sewer, Sewage Works Association, a New Mexico nonprofit corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
Look for a motion to open public hearing for ordinance 24-133.
Don't move.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Commissioners, we sent this to Malaga. Didn't receive any feedback from them with regards to any issues. So I'm ready to move forward with this one as well.
Any public comment for ordinance 24-133 from Malaga Mutual Domestic Water? Don't have any additional comment?
I know that we've worked well with all these co-ops, the county managers, and I'm sure they're figuring we're going to continue that in the same fashion. Good relationship.
Commissioners? I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 24-132.
Don't move.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Now can I get a motion to come out of public hearing for ordinance 24-133?
Several.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova? Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Item 10, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-134, Ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Morningside Water Users Cooperative, a New Mexico nonprofit corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
Can I get a motion to open public hearing for ordinance 24-134?
Don't move.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Commissioners, I was in touch with Morningside Water. I'm pretty sure they're a hundred percent agreeable as the manager signed the draft copy that I gave them. I think we're good to move forward with this one.
Do we have any public comment for ordinance 24-134? Mr. Taber, ordinance? With that, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 24-130.
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion in seconds, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Can we get a motion to come out of public hearing for ordinance 24-134? Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova? Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
We did pull item number 11, Ordinance 24-135, New Mexico Gas Company. We'll move to item 12, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-136, Ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise to Otis Mutual Domestic Water Consumers and Sewage Works Association, a New Mexico nonprofit corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
Look for a motion to open public hearing to consider ordinance 24-136.
Don't move.
Motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Commissioners, I took this to Otis. I add, for disclosure purposes, I am the president of the Otis Mutual Domestic Water Association. I took this to them. I definitely wanted to be on record that when, when we discussed it, I, I made no motion on the board and abstained from any, any direction on the board when I took this to them. But they were, all the other directors were agreeable to this ordinance.
Anybody have anything to add? Public comment? For Otis, Otis Mutual Domestic Water? With that, I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance 24-136.
Don't move.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Can we get a motion to come out of public hearing on ordinance 24-136? A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova? Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Item 13, Public Hearing to Consider Ordinance 24-137, Non-exclusive franchise agreement for Penasco Valley Telephone Cooperative and a Mexico corporation and public utility by Eddie County, New Mexico.
We'll to have a motion to open public hearing to consider ordinance 24-137.
I'll make the motion in a second.
A motion in a second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Wardova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beard?
Yes.
Commissioners, Mr. Hubbard from P E T had the intention of being here, not that he had any, any problem with the ordinance. He gave you all eighty questions of him. He never had prior engagement today and couldn't make it, but did talk in the past on that they are agreeable to the ordinance. And we've, we've received no other comment on that.
Do we have any public comment for ordinance 24-137? Anybody else have any comments, any concerns, questions? So now I'll look for a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four dash one thirty-seven. Motion in the second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Now I'll look for a motion to bring us out of public hearing on ordinance twenty-four dash one thirty-two.
No move.
Motion in the second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova? Carlson?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
We did remove item number fourteen, ordinance twenty-four dash one thirty-nine for Happy Valley Cooperative Water Works. We'll bring this back at a later time. So with that, that concludes all of our ordinance hearings. We'll move into our trailing agenda. Our first item is commission meeting minutes for January ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Do we have any questions or items or concerns need be brought? Look for a motion to approve commission meeting minutes for January ninth, twenty twenty-four.
No.
Motion in the second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Next we have purchase card approval report for December twenty twenty-three.
Are there any questions on there or items for further discussion? That'll look for a motion to approve the purchase card, purchase card approval report for December twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion in two seconds, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova? Carlson?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Next we have chairman's signature for volunteer paraforms, Chief Mack.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is just our annual request to be able to coordinate with the chairman of the commission to get all of the volunteer paraforms signed. Usually it takes place first part of March into February.
Do they have any questions for Chief Mack?
Need to approve this, Chief Mack?
Yes, allow me to.
We can have a motion for approval.
No move. Second.
Motion in the second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova? Carlson?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Questions?
Did say yes, right?
Next I'll look for our resolution and agreement consent agenda. Unless there's any items to pull to be discussed, I'll just give a motion for approval.
No move.
Motion in the second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova? Carlson?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Next we have the travel request consent agenda. Again, unless any items need to be pulled to discuss, I'll just ask for a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve travel request consent agenda as a reason?
Second.
Motion in the second, please call for the vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova? Carlson?
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
We do not have any emergency business today. Legislative comments, announcements, and updates. I do have, uh, some legislative updates. Matt Thompson from Cambria, who we consult with, um, has been giving regular updates. As you know, the legislative session just started. Um, Governor gave her annual state of state address on Tuesday. Um, just a few of those highlights. Um, that was discussed economic development and infrastructure. Um, she wants to dedicate approximately two percent, which is about a hundred and seventy million, of the state severance tax permanent fund to invest in companies developing advanced energy technologies. Uh, she talked about housing and homelessness, establishing a state of office of housing as a one-stop shop for housing developers and contractors, streamlining processes from start to finish. Um, healthcare, behavioral health, and child well-being, establishing a hospital provider tax that will bring in an additional one point five to two billion in federal dollars into the states. Um, education, um, requiring a hundred and eighty days of instructional at public schools. Public safety, um, talked about firearms, requiring a fourteen day waiting period to purchase firearms. Ban assault rifles, raise the purchase age to twenty-one for all firearms. And just overall, the New Mexico lawmakers will have thirty days to decide how to spend, um, about ten mil- ten billion dollars. And overall, the state has a little bit more than three billion in money. There are some bills, um, I did distribute the list, um, I believe this week, just on some pre-filled bills that us as Eddie County will be looking at and tracking specifically. Um, one of them that's going to be on our radar, uh, that will affect us is the Family and Medical Leave Act, which is House Bill Six and Senate Bill Three. Um, there's quite a bit of discussion, I know, in our manager's affiliate about this and some prior discussion. Um, it will impact counties, um, and cities if passed. Um, what this would do is it would require, um, employers to pay, uh, point four percents of wages every single year, and employees would pay point five percent of wages. And the payout would be a hundred percent a minimum wage and sixty-seven percents above and beyond that. Um, for us as Eddie County, with our gross annual payroll, um, our contribution would be roughly about a hundred thousand dollars. Overall, the county statewide, it would be a little bit over two million dollars that we'd be looking at statewide for all counties if this were to pass. Uh, so just kind of to put it in perspective, someone making about fifty-four thousand dollars, they'd be paying in about two hundred and seventy-two dollars a year. And if they were to take that leave, um, for this act, they would be getting about eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars a week. So, uh, just a little bit of information on that, that's something that, um, we're tracking and looking into. There were some house bills, um, that were filed, um, House Bill Thirty, which is no, no use of fresh water in certain oil and gas operations. House Bill Thirty-One and House Bill Thirty-Two, which are additional penalties and rules for environmental oil spills, and also oil and gas production in children's health production zones, um, they have to be so many miles away from, uh, school zones. Um, House Bill Fifty-four, uh, which Scott and Pettigrew are bringing forward, uh, which is cities and counties, uh, distribution of state brochure seats tax, um, a certain percentage of be, I believe, eight percent of revenues attributed brochure seats to be distributed to cities and counties. And there's a few others, but those are the ones that are kind of on our radar, um, as it progresses and moves along as well. We have, um, daily updates and daily meetings that we're attending, so, um, I'll be bringing you guys some more updates as those come along. Is there any other legislative comments, announcements, just anything under legislators?
I'll just bring it up in line.
Next we'll move on to elected official and department comments, announcements, and updates.
Good morning. Um, I've actually, I have a significant amount for you, so bear with me. I think you're gonna wanna hear most of it at least. Um, we just had our New Mexico Counties Legislative Conference. Uh, I presided over that and it was a, a, a great success. Um, we had the biggest turnout we've ever had. Over a thousand people attended our, our conference. That's huge. Um, we, uh, we got a lot done too. I will say that Commissioner Carlson represented y'all well, and I won't steal his thunder, 'cause I know he's gonna wanna talk about the Arrowhead. Um, I try to bring content to the board meetings every time that's gonna, it, it be of interest to folks, and this time the focus was on our Arrowhead study, and Commissioner Carlson and Jason Burns did a great job, or Jason Wyatt, right? There was a typo, I think it was my fault in the, on the, the board, uh, the, the agenda, and it said, uh, Jason Wyatt, and I, I can't, I can only imagine, because Jason Wyatt lives across the street from me, so I was probably thinking about him when I told him that. Anyway, Jason Burns did help present as well. Um, so we, like I said, we got a lot done. Um, I had a, we had a good board meeting. Um, we had a lot of good breakouts with our affiliates, uh, like Roberta was alluding to, the, the managers got a lot done, commissioners got a lot done, and sheriffs. Um, I took over as, uh, president of the New Mexico Sheriff's Association, like I needed one more hat to wear. Uh, but we, we definitely need some, uh, we need some focus and leadership this year, because it's gonna get a little wild and woolly. Um, our executive board for New Mexico Counties, we will be meeting every Thursday, uh, to, virtually, to keep us updated. Um, so that, that's a big deal that, that, uh, we're gonna have our lobbyist, Catherine Crociata, um, is gonna keep us updated and, and of course, Grace enjoy, uh, our legislative, the rest of our legislative team. So we, we received some awards at the, Eddie County received awards at the, uh, at our sessions. Uh, it was auditors, we, we had clean audits again, which was, uh, started out by Roberta and now being carried on by our team there, and, uh, so we're real proud about that. Um, at the closing, I attended the lobbyist breakfast and, um, was able to hear from our lobbyists, and everybody else's about their priorities, and I, I, I took the time, uh, or the privilege, I guess, as president to, uh, speak on behalf of Eddie County, and I, I told them that we're gonna be watching very closely, and there's a slew of, I think there's twenty-four anti-gun bills out there right now. And I, I said, and I said, I think, I, I hope I spoke well for y'all, because I said Eddie County will vehemently oppose any, any, any attempt to pass laws that violate the Second Amendment. And we will strongly oppose ones that we think aren't gonna be any use. So I did speak a little bit for y'all. If you, if, 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 uh, if I spoke out of turn, please let me know. But I think I know how all of y'all feel about these issues. We, we, we stand, we stand tall for our citizens here. Um, so that was really good. It was eye-opening to hear from the other counties, hear what their, their, uh, objectives are, hear what they're looking for. And, uh, there's a lot of head nodding going on when I was talking about some of our, our stuff. So that's a big deal. Um, we've got some, through, uh, working with our congressional members, uh, in, our state congressional members, uh, we've got some, some money coming. Uh, Senator McCutcheon is going to be helping significantly. We, he and I both have two objectives that we're looking at. I don't wanna get, get the cart before the horse, but, uh, one is hopefully gonna be a, a recurring, uh, infusion of money for, for a, a worthwhile project. Uh, we're, we're looking at a, a fentanyl task force, I think, and, and the sheriff's office will be heading that up. But it'll be multidisciplinary and, uh, I, it, it, we, we may lean on you some, Commissioner. Um, but, uh, we're going somewhere with that. Uh, Representative soon-to-be Senator Townsend, uh, got ahold of me yesterday, and he has some money for me so that we can do a, a, a couple of projects, and that's gonna fall, a lot of our, a lot of what we're doing is an attack on the drugs. And, uh, we're, we're probably gonna be bringing another K nine onboard, and that's what some of that money's gonna help with. We're getting K nine out full-time at the drug task force, um, and it, it all goes down, it all comes down to, to what's happening at our border with all the fentanyl coming across and, and us having to pick up the tab and fight it, but we'll do that. At the, I, I was real happy to be able to present, um, at the, at our, our opening session. My keynote speaker was Sheriff Chris Swanson from Michigan. And I, my presidential initiative for this year with New Mexico Counties has been a program called Ignite. And I know that, that Billy is really on board with it, very excited about it. It's, uh, inmate growth naturally and intentionally through education is what it stands for. And this could transform our jails and our, our, uh, penitentiaries in New Mexico. I just found out, I got great news from Terry Fortner, one of my, well, she's actually New Mexico Counties, uh, vice president now. Her brother is, I think, a deputy secretary of the Department of Corrections. He is very interested in this program. So it's an educational program, uh, where we're gonna actually start looking at ways to improve at how our, get, get, get our inmates educated before they walk out the doors. I've spoken about it to y'all before, but, uh, if, I wish y'all could, all could have been there to hear Chris. Chris is just a, a ball of fire. And everybody kept coming up to me and thanking me for that. It's him, it's not me. I just brought him here. This guy's the, the amazing one. And, uh, just remember that name, Chris Swanson, that next governor of Michigan. I, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty sure of that. Uh, so I'm really excited about that. The governor and I actually got along for the brief period of time that we were on the dais together. We threw a couple of jabs at each other, and it was all in, there, there was no punches or anything like that. So it, it was interesting. Um, so some of the other things to, to talk about that, to follow on with what Roberta was saying was, uh, is, uh, we were shocked and amazed on return to work. New Mexico Counties, last year, we looked at a very narrowly focused bill that would've been for detention, because, I mean, I think everyone across the state can get behind that and say detention is in trouble. We need to hire people. So we worked on that last year. It didn't get anywhere, uh, didn't get out of committee. This year, and I, if y'all know, remember the, if you dig back to the historical, uh, issues with return to work, it's been the unions. Specifically, Albert, Police Department Union is one of the biggest ones that has fought. Um, they came to us and said, look, we're, we, we think we're okay with this detention one. It's narrowly focused, it's entry level. They said, we can, we can, we're okay with this. Um, then, here's the crazy part. They came, they came to us with this and said, you know what? We think maybe we should include law enforcement. Holy cow. I mean, that, that would be transformative. I would like to see them, and hopefully, um, the, the fire unions can, can back out of this too, and maybe we can get some, some traction with fire. Maybe do public safety altogether where we have a return to work package. I don't know. I don't know, and Josh may be able to shed some light on that. Um, but definitely, we're looking at a very, very good possibility, and I don't want to jinx it, that we could have corrections and law enforcement return to work. And it's gonna be very narrowly focused, entry level, going for a specific amount of time. There's, there's guardrails built into it. But that's how we got the, the unions to back off. So it may actually happen. Um, recruiting and retention, there's gonna be money coming out again for, uh, law enforcement and for fire. We fought for fire last year. This year, we're fighting for, uh, detention, uh, re- uh, retention, recruiting, where that, that pot of money comes in, where we can actually pay, pay some bonuses and some, some, uh, whatever, however, y'all decide with Billy to, to spend that money. But we're hoping it's gonna be a significant amount, and we're hoping it'll make a big impact, um, like it did with law enforcement, and I think it's doing it with fire. So there's some really good stuff going on with that. The, um, believe it or not, some of the, the, and I guess they're included in the anti-gun, uh, group. Some of the, the laws that, uh, that the governor is calling are called, what, the, the laws that, the bills that she's calling have some merit to them. Um, there, we're talking about enhancements for, uh, penalties for violent crimes. Um, enhancement for, uh, having a, a firearm with you when you're dealing drugs, which we tried to do last time, and somebody on the, the, the floor of the legislature said, well, um, that's a dangerous business. We don't wanna disarm our citizens where they can't deal drugs and get saved. We're going, are you kidding me? So I think they, they, they realized the folly of that, and they, they moved back on that. So there, there are some good bills in there. You ju- we just have to dig through them, and, and I urge you to, to, to do your homework, uh, because it's, and it's, it's a mess. It's a mess. It's hard. Uh, there, there's Sheriff, uh, Mendoza from, uh, Santa Fe County, a good friend and colleague of mine, is on the task force to reform, revise the red flag law. Um, it needs it. The red, our red flag law does need to pass. It needs it. The red, our red flag law does need to pass muster with the feds. Where, you know, if they're talking about a nationwide red flag law, they're like, don't use New Mexico's as an example because it's horrible and it's a violation of constitutional rights. So we've got a lot of pressure coming out of the governor's office to use it. They even have a task force that is trying to, well, they're, they want to come and give us training on it, on how to use it. I, I'm not down with it. There's other ways. And we, we just did it recently with a, with a violent person here in, right outside of Carlsbad. And we were able to get the guns removed in a constitutionally sound way. Instead of using the, because that was initially came up, let's use the red flag. No, we're not going to do that. We've got other ways to do that. Let's show that we have other ways. So they're working on that. I, I can't, I haven't read it yet, the whole thing yet. I'm working on it, trying to get it figured out. And I'll, I'll hope, hopefully I can give y'all some updates on that as to what the changes are. I do know some of the changes are having, having medical providers. I don't know if it'll extend to nurse practitioners or just doctors. I don't know if it's dentists or what it is. But, because they haven't really defined it. But allowing those folks to petition. Now, will it go through us? That's another thing. We don't know. Does it have to go through law enforcement? Don't know. One good thing for the county is some of the liability has been taken off of me, which takes the, the, the onus off of y'all, is originally, if anybody refused or decided not to do a red flag after it was petitioned for, it had to come to me. And I had tracked that and, and analyzed. Well, they, they did away with that, thank goodness, because that was, that was a, that would have been a problem. Could have been a problem for the county. So there's that. The other one that, that has raised a lot of apples, we have DPS Secretary Jason Bowie, another good friend of mine, came in and visited with us at the Sheriff's Office Sandal Warren. I said, dude, we come into a hostile apartment with the sheriffs right now. There's a bill that was floated from the governor that another fifteen percent raise for state police, which God bless them. And I, I hope they make all the money that they're making. But they've already received raises and they're leaving us all in the dust. Even here in Eddie County, they're, they're leaving us in the dust. And it's, it's going to start being difficult for us to keep people from going there. So many smaller agencies, if they get that fifteen percent raise, you're talking agencies where deputies can make twenty bucks an hour more. Like one of the state police. That's life-changing. And how can you, how can you blame someone for that? I mean, these young deputies. That, that's, that's a life-changing amount. That's over double their salary. Because some of them only make eighteen bucks an hour. So we, we're, we voiced our concerns about that, like, hey, those are our tax dollars too. So we do have to say so on where that money goes. But the other part of that bill was that the DPS secretary will annual, and there'll be an appropriation for it too, that the DPS secretary will annually review state police salaries and to ensure that state police remain the highest-paid law enforcement agency in the state. We were like, come on, come on, man. That's, that's, I, I don't see how you can even put that into a law. You want to give raises, give raises. But how do you legislate that they're going to be the highest-paid law enforcement officers in the state? That just, that will decimate smaller agencies. Our teacher PD would just, I mean, folks can go and just, and, and what are they going to do? Of course, why would you blame them for that? So we talked with the DPS secretary about that. I talked with him rationally and reasonably. Some of the other sheriffs kind of blasted him. And he said, look, I'm, I have to advocate for my people. Those are my people. And he said, but, he goes, I understand your concerns and we're looking at it. And so I just want y'all to be aware of that. We also have heard word that that's probably not going to pass. The DPS secretary said that what he really wanted, he just wants his folks to be able to get their step raises, which is reasonable. So just be aware that there's a lot of stuff. I mean, it, it's like, and Catherine Crociata came back, she said, it is, everything is moving fast, fast, fast. You have to have your head on swivel because it's moving and moving and moving. So I encourage you, if, if you have concerns about anything out there, pay attention. I, I, you, you all have access to those alerts that, that we get on our phones. Pay attention. If it's something that, that you're interested in, please get ahold of me. Please get ahold of Commissioner Carlson. He's your other representative on the board. He's your voting member. And we'll pass it on to New Mexico counties that, what your concerns are and what we can look at. Like I said, I'll be on the executive board meetings every Thursday. We're going to be talking. So. The, the last thing I have, and I'll wrap this up because I'm going on way long. I went to DC with Joyce Parson, our executive director for the Presidents and Executive Directors Conference. It was really, it was a whirlwind. It was real fast boom, boom, boom. I still haven't been feeling real good. Still recovering from the, that nasty flu that was going around. And so it, it was okay. Going back, we've got our NACO, our, our NACO National Conference, our Legislative Conference and the National Sheriff's Legislative Conference. So I'll be representing Eddie County there. I think you're, you're planning on going to NACO, right? Is anybody else going to NACO? There'll be, it, it, it's going to, that, it's going to, hopefully we can get a lot done there. We can get some advocacy and see where we're going with everything. So. I'm actually really looking forward to going to DC for extended period of time. It is what it is. So does anybody have anything that, that would like for me to address after that long, new report? All right. Thank y'all.
Good morning. Cage kind of stole my thunder, but I was coming out to acknowledge that. This year at the conference this past week, my finance team got acknowledged for a audit accountability award for fiscal year 2022. So before my time, but a strong team's in place and operating in such good shoes for future years.
I wanted to update commissioners on something I talked about at the last meeting. We had our training later that day for our records to go online. And they weren't quite, quite ready for the images to go online. So I'm not very happy with the customer support that we have. This is the same company that we have our recording and filing software through. So they already have access to our scanned images. They're telling me now February ninth. So ringers crossed, that'll happen. I don't know if I said at the last meeting, but we were supposed to go live in August. So. It's kind of frustrating, but hopefully beginning of February, our images will be online. And I'll keep you guys updated.
I'll sneak up just because the sheriff called me out. Mister Chairman, Commissioner, so there seems to be a quick update. We did fill our last two firefight positions yesterday. Um, one is certified with the advanced EMT and the other one is one of our former volunteers who went to Doniana Community College. He got his EMT and that is what inspired stuff. So it's good to see him come back to us. We do have seven new employees starting Monday. So on Tuesday, we plan to open Station Four, which is the new station off Otis. Highway W led to the personal four this year. We do have three applicants for lieutenant, which is our last position. So then we'll close all positions Friday. And we're still having applications trickle in. So we've built a hiring list for firefighting positions for the future. So. Senate Bill twenty-one and House Bill eighty-eight are recruitment and retention bills, which will match up with what the sheriff got last year for law enforcement public safety. We look forward to it. It's thirty-five million dollars. They're going as a one-time allotment for three years. Kind of see how it goes. It's to help bolster response in the absent times because every department was struggling like we were. Getting daytime response. So they're trying to figure that out. Another thing is, is the Fire Miam affiliate discussed the return to work bill, which we were in favor of last year. Some of the resistance was from the unions. Due to them trying to push cancel legislation, things like that. So it sounds like everybody's getting on board. So if it pushes and it comes our way, we're definitely willing to take it because everybody's hurting trying to get people that want to do the job. And then the last thing I had, this is just an FYI. I don't know where it's going either. I got an email of a bill proposal to not require in-home daycares to comply with fire code. So I thought I was definitely opposed to that because then is all you have to do is a big daycare is go buy a house and write it in there. Exams, which is going to lead to preschools, schools. And we'll be right back where we were in history when there was fires in Chicago and all that. So. Not sure where it'll go, but we are definitely opposed to it. If it comes up, we will be in Santa Fe opposing that heavily. The State Fire Marshal's Office did tell us to have ten applications for consolidations. Some are full consolidations, some are partials. So that'll make eleven counties, which is a third of the counties within the last year since we did all of our consolidation to follow us through our process and choose to do the same thing. So. The good thing for that is there were two hundred and forty-seven county-recognized fire departments receiving state funding. There's ninety-nine municipalities. So you can see how that just divided the money even more and more. So that should reduce that and help that. February thirteenth, we will be in Santa Fe for the State Fire Grant Council meeting. Is what I'm trying to push for is for them to actually fund projects versus, as y'all know, we put in for a grant every year. We get three or four hundred thousand dollars, which is a minute piece of the pie. And money's there for projects and we have departments, which we learned a lot more as we got rid of trucks that, some of ours that weren't in the greatest shape were better than what they were serving their public with. So. I'm trying to get them to push to actually fund apparatus and things like that. That'll improve ISO and improve morale across the state to try to get the fire service back up on its feet. Questions, comments, concerns? If something comes up that y'all hear about that you think we need to have a voice for, let me know and we'll help you out. Thank you.
Let me know if that fire code thing comes up and I'll bring it up at the executive board meeting so NMC can.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, wait until y'all left Santa Fe.
NMC will definitely push against it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other updates? I'll move to county manager comments. I did have a long list, but now that everyone kind of spoke, kind of spoke on a lot of things I was going to talk about. I did want to say Sheriff Mark, Mark Cage was modest when he was speaking. He did a wonderful job in representing Eddie County as NMC's president. Did a great job. The guest speaker was amazing. And I was happy to know that we were already part of that program for the Ignite program and our detention center. After the opening session, there was a lot of people who came up to me congratulating us that we already have that in place and that we are leading that way. So it was really good. Also, you should be really proud of your elected officials and departments. We had almost every single elected official in department representing our affiliate. It was really nice to see everyone up there representing and speaking on behalf of their expertise. We have a lot of elected officials and department heads either chairing their affiliate, vice-chairing their affiliate. And if they're not doing that, they're already leading the way in things that they do, like Josh Mack and his consolidation. I had a couple of county managers come up to me and congratulate us for that. Our warden, Billy Massengill, had a lot of comments on the detention center side because that was a big topic in the manager's affiliate that we talked a lot about was the detention centers and all the issues, the mental health issues that are coming across. I know Commissioner Henry had talked about mental health issues. So kind of moving along into the manager's affiliate, it was definitely a different change. Being a veteran in the finance affiliate for fourteen years and then coming newly to the manager's affiliate, I got to listen a lot to all the expertise, to all the issues that are out there. And even though we talked about several topics, detention was really the main one that we kept coming around to, no matter what the topic was. I know the warden has spoke a lot about certain issues, but really, mental health was the biggest issue. And these problems have been around for years, right? I mean, funding, staffing of the detention centers. We had some people come and talk to us. I believe they talked to the detention affiliate as well too. They're the Crime and Justice Institute. And they're kind of a nonprofit organization that speaks on behalf. They talk to legislators in states to how to improve detention and jails. And they were trying to get information from us and the detention centers on what, you know, what are the issues? Everyone has the same issue. We talked to, you know, all three, thirty-three counties and everyone has the same issues in the detention center. The question was asked, well, what is the disconnect then? And how are these issues still out there ten and fifteen years later? And really, the answer that you get is the disconnect is at the state level. You know, nobody wants to provide the resources. And you as commissioners know, you guys do a great job on providing resources to law enforcement, to fire service, to get the job done. And I think that's the biggest disconnect. And I know myself as a new county manager, really needs to push that on a lot of our legislators and talk more at the state level on that. Of how we need the resources for the detention centers. Because a lot of the counties, you know, they have the cap law. They could build a new detention center. They could build a new mental health facility. But that's just part of the problem. Getting the services here, as you know. I mean, just in general, getting physicians here in our community in general, not even talking about in the detention center is a challenge. But then trying to get physicians in the detention centers and then top of that, because of all the mental health problems that we're having, to get those services provided in the detention centers as well too. That along with just in general, getting people, kids, once they graduate, a lot of people move out to go to college in a different area. You know, nobody's staying here. Nobody's coming back here for those opportunities in the right. So it was even a bigger discussion on how to bring those resources back to New Mexico. So just as an overall, that was kind of, you know, the gist of the manager's affiliate and some of the, the biggest issue that we're trying to discuss and, and bring forward. Not only in this legislative, but moving forward as well too. Another thing was, we did have DFA Wesley, the Division Director, came to talk. The Lieutenant Governor. We had a manager's affiliate back in October. The Lieutenant Governor came to ask if we had any issues with managers. A lot of the counties are having issues with DFA, not only with the change in their personnel and their turnover, but the financial system that they require all counties and municipalities to use. But also, there's a lot of issues with grants. Us as Eddie County don't necessarily have a lot of those issues, but we did specifically have one for our recreational grant. And one of the issues that was discussed is that when capital appropriations are approved, it's taking a long time for counties to get those. And by the time they're getting them, they have three to six months to actually spend that money. And then the money's getting reverted back and it's, it's just a vicious cycle. So DFA did speak on that behalf, saying, again, you know, we need to talk to our legislators about that to make sure that when those funds get passed, they get passed for more than a year, especially on those bigger projects. That way they're not getting reverted. Just real quick, the FMLA bill that I had talked about, it is going to be for discussion at eight-thirty tomorrow. So again, like Sheriff Cage had mentioned, if you would like to look in on that, please let me know and I can give you a link to, to do that. And then the last thing that's still kind of hanging out there is the General Services Department and the Health Benefit Fund. You know, back before, what, in June of twenty twenty-three, all the counties that were part of the pool, I think there's twenty-four of them, had received invoices. They were going to be increasing the health insurance premiums. They did that come January of twenty twenty-four. We had a ten percent increase. In talking to the HR affiliate, it looks like they want to increase that an additional fifteen percent coming up for this new fiscal year. There still is a hundred and fifty million dollar deficit. So I was talking, are they going to fund that deficit? Those invoices that they sent out, that would not pay for the deficit. That was just going to pay for the increase in the ten percent. When we had a discussion, it was told to us by the General Services Department, but back in twenty nineteen, that fund was in the black. They did do an RFP three and a half years ago during that time. And during that time, of course, they awarded the RFP and those claims were set. And then COVID hit and then you had an increase in claims, which hence, fast forward three years now. And that's the issue that we're, we're kind of facing this year. So that's kind of still an ongoing thing as well too. But that'll be something that we'll be facing come budget time now in February and March when we start doing the budget. With that, that is all I have. Time to go over to you for commissioner comments.
Uh, Mr. Here, uh, let me quick, I, uh, it was pretty obvious to me that Eddie County currently will, will change. She seems to be getting some recognition around the state. I would particularly like to thank everybody that had anything to do with an audit, you know, findings. That has become the norm. I can remember when that did not used to be the norm, so congratulations to everybody that got that back. Commissioner Hare?
I'll keep my period short, but I think one of the things Roberta said is something that we've been saying for a long time, the disconnect is in Santa Fe. I think that statement could even be more true on so many levels. And listening to what Sheriff Cage talked about, I wrote a lot of notes because it gets a little frustrating when to fight crime, we're gonna take away semi-automatic guns and we're gonna fight crime. Those are part of the crime bills because we had, we'd had to have an order to fight crime in Albuquerque. And rather than have a special session to actually put good legislation where we can get sheriffs and police officers and the folks that actually do it involved and have good discussion and actually well thought out, we're gonna throw it into the middle of a session that's really a budget session, but we're gonna make the call so that we can attack the crime. It just doesn't work. It's so frustrating when I look at Santa Fe and our state in general. Our answer to so many counties is, we'll just throw money at it or take guns away, and that's gonna fix everything. You know, we're gonna throw more money at the school system, and I'm not advocating not to, but it's not gonna fix the problem. We spin towards the top. If you look at as a nation, we spin towards the top on education. Our performance is at the bottom. It doesn't appear to be a money problem, it appears to be another problem. So how do we fix that? Why don't we go to the local level? Why don't we go to the sheriffs and the police for the crime? Why don't we go to local level and ask teachers and superintendents and principals, hey, what's going on in the schools? How do we do it? Let the locals deal with it. I know a ton of local schools that could do an amazing job when they're not having to do what the state is asking them to do because the state knows all, it's amazing how smart those guys are and how further and further behind you're going as a state. You're absolutely right. I get so angry because talking to my daughter is so much fun. She goes to Baylor University, and thank goodness she's smart, because she has taught me so much, to the point where I wanna go back to school because the stuff she's learning there, and then I, what she tells me, I have a learned class today. And then I apply it to our state, and I'm like, holy cow, no wonder kids aren't coming back. Because we're so far behind, we're not even looking at the new stuff happening and how it affects things. So these kids are gonna stay away, and so we're fighting for a state that many of our kids aren't coming back to right now. And it's very disappointing because that's why we're fighting for it. If you're not fighting for the next generation, why are we even fighting? But so many times, the legislation we get is sorry legislation to fix a problem. One example, let's have another example. Every time I walk into a gas station, I laugh because I look at all the little mini bottles that they sell of liquor. Now, if y'all can remember, two sections ago, we legislated to take away the small bottles of liquor, the really small bottles. I don't know the numbers, but they were a smaller bottle of liquor because that increased the DWI rate. So what did we do? We legislated, we took those away. So now you buy a little bit bigger bottle of liquor. And so now, instead of the little bitty bottle, we're gonna have a little bit bigger bottle, but we're gonna fight the DWI crisis. We have such a crisis with how we're affecting families with alcohol. Let's legalize marijuana because that's gonna really help that problem and take that problem away. All we do at the state level is compound our issues. And in the governor's own admission, when she was interviewed after that ridiculous order to Albuquerque, are the criminals going to abide by your gun-carrying laws? By her own admission, no. And so we're gonna pass legislation to take guns away from you and I, good, honest Americans that wanna protect ourselves, but let's take guns away from them, knowing full well that nothing is going to change in the criminal world. I'm glad they're funding maybe gonna put penalties on gun crime. They should. And we should make them stick and keep those folks in jail, but we won't because, because, gosh. I think that's the funniest statement to your point. Well, drug trade's pretty dangerous, so make sure they're armed. That's what I want. I want an armed drug dealer as I'm walking down the street. That's awesome. But I don't wanna be armed. Yeah, heaven forbid, I have something to protect myself, but let's make sure those drug dealers are armed because they need that protection. You know, I'm really, really happy that y'all are gonna get a Fentanyl task force. That is so needed because my frustration level for Fentanyl, I think I've talked about this too many times, I understand that. But it's so frustrating that we're gonna have to have a Fentanyl task force, and yet, our border at New Mexico is open. Texas is now shutting down the border even more. So I was watching more reports yesterday. They are watching illegals come to those barbed-wired fences and where Texas has said no more. And those illegal immigrants are telling them, well, we're just gonna go down the way. Well, what's down the way? Us. So that stuff is gonna come right through our state, and we're having to create the Fentanyl task force to stop the Fentanyl because they're not gonna stop it at the border, we all know. And if you talk to our, even our federal congress, I've said this a million times, and y'all get tired of hearing it. But if you talk to our congresswoman, ours, not yours, because they split that, they made that. The one that's in Artesia, she said, well, we're gonna put more checks at the border check. Okay, great. Well, that's not gonna come from, I watch Fox News, I watch any kind of news. I watch the farmer and the rancher that's filming them come right across their ranch. They're not going to the border check to run those drugs across. So yeah, put a whole bunch of stuff there. That's awesome. All that means is they're gonna go ten miles down and cross right there with the Fentanyl. I don't mean to belabor the point, but every time the session's end, I get so absolutely frustrated because rather than take something and actually apply good thought to it and get the experts in the room and try to solve a problem, we solve a problem by trying to have feel-good legislation by taking the small liquor bottle off because that's gonna solve the problem. And it's such a ridiculous thing to come back to, but that is how we legislate in the state of New Mexico. Let's take the small liquor bottles, we'll have to buy a bigger one. Let's take, let's not really focus on the school. Let's just give the schools more money and that'll fix the problem. Let's take away the four-day week for some of these schools. That is work. Some of those schools that they're gonna take that four-day week from, if you look at their test scores, are some of the higher ones in the state. And yet, let's make sure they're not, obviously it's working, so let's make them comply with what everybody else is doing. Let's punish the rest of the state because the Albuquerque schools can't get it together. Absolutely disheartening and so frustrating, and I'm so sorry I wasn't up there last week. I got sick for the first time in so long, and I was sick, unfortunately. I can usually power through. Because I really was interested in a lot of the stuff, I truly believe that Eddie County is a frontline in taking drugs off the street. I'm so proud of that because I want those dudes caught because I'm sick and tired of families getting affected daily because that Fentanyl and all the other drugs are in our system, and we're doing nothing to stop it on a state or federal level, nothing. But Eddie County, yes, and we're doing everything we can, and I'm proud to be a part of a group like this. You have no idea. I hope there's more legislators at some point that have to come from these levels that understands every time y'all make these impacts, how it impacts the cities and counties. Because they have no idea. Listening to them, a bulk of them are clueless on, oh, well, the counties can do this, or the cities, just do that. Do an unfunded mandate, let's put more money on them. While we have three billion dollars, two billion dollars, not really a billion dollars, Eddie Lee County sends up next year to them to spend, it's disappointing that the governor wants to spend ten percent of the minimum. When the federal, the finance legislative committee said, no, no, we only need to increase by six, let's make, let's actually, I lost the word, be responsible, I had a better word, with our monies, and let's put some aside. But what does our governor do? Oh, no, let's spend ten on reoccurring costs. So let's hope all those reoccurring costs continue to come back, but then let's make sure we make oil and gas, make it harder on them, which is where we get our money, because then we're gonna go to environmentally friendly things, which have been proven to just not work. So I understand that, so far, I apologize for it, but I'm so frustrated every time I listen to all these bills that we're passing that are feel-good legislation, don't be mistaken by it. And I wish the public would understand that. This is feel-good that does absolutely nothing to solve the problem. If we wanna solve the problem, let's start talking mental health. That solves your gun problem in a lot of ways because a lot of it is because of mental health. But we won't solve that because it's hard. Let's just take the done away because that'll fix the problem. We absolutely know that's a lie, just a flat-out lie. So with that, I apologize, but that's all I got. Thanks.
Commissioner Carlson?
Oh, okay, so as the sheriff alluded to earlier, last Tuesday, I was up and got to do the presentation to the New Mexico counties on our Arrowhead study. It was well-received. I thought that we had a lot of discussion. I asked the sheriff the night before, I said, how much time do I have? And we kind of talked about ten, fifteen, about fifteen, twenty minutes maybe. And then he had said, well, you know, I'm the president, so I guess we got the most time as possible. And I'm glad he said that because the discussion and presentation went off for about an hour. I think that's, and finally, the sheriff had to say, hey, guys, we got other things that we have to address. But we had a good discussion. Most of it was really favorable. And so I think that, I think that we've done well, having put out there the Arrowhead study. I think that that really was well. I think we got a lot of notice from a lot of different folks. It was one time that I've gotten to talk to different commissioners and elected officials from throughout the state. And I had a lot of them come up to me and told me that, that they really appreciated us bringing it. One of them is even from over in Lee County. He came over to me and told me, I really appreciate you bringing this to our attention. And so that went really well. I think the platform that we have on the Arrowhead study is really a good platform. Just for an example, AMOGA has now came out with a study of their own, and it's an interactive map, but it gives the same, the same information that we're giving in our Arrowhead study with just a little different presentation where you click on a county and it'll show how much they sent the prior year and stuff. So I think we've done, I think we've done good on Arrowhead study. And I'm just glad to see that maybe it's getting a little traction up in Santa Fe. Kind of a sad note, I don't know if you've read the news and stuff, but one of the things that you mentioned a minute ago was the razor wire and stuff, Supreme Court has now ruled that the federal government can take that razor wire out. So I hate to see that. I think it was a deterrent for illegal immigration. And I think that we have to do something to protect our borders. So I hate to see us get, you know, actually try to do something as county and local and state governments try to do something to take care of the weakness that the federal government's not taking care of. But it's either gone the other way, and that's, I think that's a sad thing.
I just want to congratulate Eddie County as well, especially recognizing the finance team. I'm so proud, you know, to be a part of Eddie County and everything that we're doing down to our detention programs. Talking about mental health and these problems, it's so complicated. There's so many levels, you know, to treating this problem. And I think that utilizing multiple different resources that we have and what we're doing, we're going to start impacting mental health favorably. And I'm just glad to hear that this is kind of a main focus and topic, talking about providers. It is hard. It is hard. It's hard to get providers here. It's hard to get good providers that are vested in these areas of, you know, detention services. It's not an easy job. But, you know, continuing to work on that, continuing to try and ship resources, things like that to really make this a worthwhile position and career, it's important. We have to keep doing it. I wanna thank Commissioner Carlson and everybody else that went up to Santa Fe last week. I'm always glad to hear that we're well represented and recognized. And lastly, just something, just a little personal, I wanna acknowledge my husband, Chris Cordova. He was awarded a national award last week for his role at the golf course. So I was just really happy and excited for him on that, so I just wanted to put it out there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
It's pretty cool to go to Santa Fe and see the perception of Eddie County. Some of it is accurate, some of it's not, but one thing's certain, it's how strong we are in Eddie County. Every department, every person that represents us up there does an extremely good job. Almost said something I shouldn't have told you. We have, watching Commissioner Carlson present the Arrowhead study amongst a group of people that aren't all of the same mindset and that are of the counties that are takers. The message was received. Even in the, even the opposition that was presented, you could see that the understanding that the message was there, and I think that's ultimately what we're trying to do with that study. It's not to change everybody's mind, but it's to illustrate that none of these other problems, or none of these other programs, rather, exist without Eddie Lee County oil and gas. Three billion dollars in new money, that's coming from Eddie Lee County. A fifteen percent raise in Mexico State Police, that's able to happen because of oil and gas. That, stuff like that happens, and that doesn't go away with oil and gas funds, because inevitably it will. And then what happens? You know, our state is so fiscally irresponsible that it's amazing, disheartening to watch. We had a dinner in Santa Fe with a bunch of our local legislators, and it was prior to session really getting kicked off. So we were able to have some true, meaningful conversation and really talk about things that are important to citizens of Eddie County. It was, normally during session, everybody's going so many different directions, their minds being pulled in so many different ways. It was really nice to sit down and have a three-hour dinner conversation with just about everybody that was representing us on a state level. In Eddie Lee and Otero County. It was, it was probably the most meaningful, probably impactful meeting that I've had in Santa Fe. Just to have people's undivided attention for an extended period, extended period of time. Finance Department receiving an award. That's awesome. It just proves to what we are here in Eddie County. We're a group to be reckoned with. We're something to be proud of. And going back to oil and gas, you have bills like House Bill thirty, House Bill thirty-one, that are direct attack on oil and gas. And yet, we still want to increase our spending, and we want to have all of these fun projects and do all these great things, but without oil and gas, it's not possible. And when we start to make it harder and harder and harder for these oil and gas companies to do their business here, they're not gonna want to. Texas isn't that far away, and their arms are wide open. There's a lot of companies that can get acreage in Texas, and we are trying to secure more acreage in Texas. This is thing, these are things that we can't be shortsighted on. We know where, where the golden goose is, and yet we keep kicking it. It's really frustrating to see. And I guess that's all I got for today.
We can have executive session? So I just need a motion that the board may go into executive session in accordance with the state of New Mexico in meeting that section ten dash fifteen dash one H two, which authorizes the board accounting commissioners to go into executive session to discuss limited personnel matters, contract employee.
Give the motion a second. Please call for vote.
Henry?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Cordova?
Carlson?
Here.
Here?
Yes.
Should be about fifteen minutes or so, Captain.